Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the October sixteenth, two thousand and three Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at seven oh three P. M. If everyone would please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, over the last ten days in our world, we have seen a lot of tragedy. We certainly want to extend our condolences to the people of Israel and the people of Gaza. Nearly three thousand people were killed, a lot of them were children and ladies. So we certainly want to extend our condolences to each and every one of them. And if you do pray, I ask that you pray for peace in the world and ask for pray for peace in the Middle East. Also, much closer to home, just on Saturday in Plainfield Township, just a few miles from Crest Hill, another tragedy occurred. So we certainly want to remember in our prayers, six-year-old Wadiya Al Fayume, who was tragically killed, and his mother, Hanan Shaheen, who is still hospitalized in critical condition. So we certainly want to pray for her, pray for Wadiya. And I would ask for a moment of silence for all those who tragically lost their lives in the Middle East. And for Wadiya Al Fayume and for his mother. And for all of the first responders that had to deal with all of the tragedies. And if they do need some mental health issues, that they seek them out from what they have witnessed. So I'd ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Coniston.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Giselle. Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Coolwell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along with the agenda, I am asking for the approval of the tabled minutes from the work session held on August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a motion by Alderwoman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the tabled work session minutes from August twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm also asking for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the work session minutes of September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm asking for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on October second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of the Crest Hill City Council meeting held on October second, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, the approval of the minutes of the work session held on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Giselle, for the approval of the work session minutes of October nine, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments?
I have a quick comment, so I thank your staff for providing all these minutes of working time. I appreciate it.
Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have one agenda item for you tonight. There is a memo and a resolution in your packet. This was discussed at a recent meeting for a new policy regarding attendance at weekly staff meetings that are called by the city administrator. I worked with Steve Golden at the direction of council to establish the policy which is included in the resolution, which is fairly self-explanatory, that basically says that no elected officials are to attend except in the absence of the city administrator. Or if that position is vacant.
Motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin, for the resolution approving policy on attendance at weekly staff meetings called by the city administrator. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution one-one-eight-nine.
Aside from that, I have nothing further other than answer any questions.
Any questions of city attorney? Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Moving on to our management consultant, Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you, mayor and council. Before you is a resolution approving the creation of the communications specialist position. There's a memo in your packet. Just to refresh the council's memory, we talked about this in a couple of different workshops. We kind of did a lot of work with the job description and the recommended salaries between fifty-five and seventy thousand dollars as per council direction. And I am looking for comments and approval of the position.
Just one question, and perhaps I didn't see it, although I did read it several times. Does it specifically say the cable scrolls? Did I miss it?
I had, I did have Dave write cable in there.
Okay.
But let me just double check. No, it says, still says media channels.
That's right.
So we will add cable to that. Cable, media channels is what we, yep, we'll add that in there.
Cable scrolls specifically too, as well.
Yep.
So move with that addition.
And motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And I just want another item. Executive session tonight, we have two items. One is for personnel and one is for threatened and pending litigation. But we'd like to remove the threatened and pending litigation. We're not quite sure if the, the subject matter is appropriate for executive session. And so we are going to discuss that internally with, with Mike and with one of the council members who asked for this executive session. This is regarding a piece of property across the street from city center and non-compliance of some ordinances that were passed several years ago. That's all I have.
Any questions of Steve?
Just, I realized that the email was not sent to all staff to invite them to work on this Saturday.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Moving on, Public Works Department, Blaine L. Holmes, ill this afternoon, so there are no agenda items. She'll be back tomorrow. City engineer, Ron Weidman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, mayor. I have four items to present tonight. The first one is looking for a motion to execute a proposal with Safe Step LLC for a small pilot sidewalk program that will evaluate and repair identified locations for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And this was previously presented to council.
What was it, Wes?
This was previously presented to council.
So move as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to execute a proposal with Safe Step LLC for a small pilot sidewalk program that will evaluate and repair identified locations not to exceed an amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is to approve a change order number two for the U. S. Route Thirty water main lining project, which will increase the contract amount to three million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. This also was previously presented to council.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, to approve a change order number two for U. S. Route Thirty water main lining project, which will increase the contract amount to three million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is to for, looking for a motion to formally reject the well fourteen bids and send the attached rejection letter to all bidders stating reasons for the bid rejection.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Coolwell, seconded by Alderman Dyke, to formally reject the well fourteen bids and send the attached rejection letter to all bidders stating the reason for the bid rejection. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last item I have is looking for a motion to execute a proposal with E. S. C. Midwest LLC to perform professional environmental engineering services for a phase-one environmental site assessment of the old city hall for a not-to-exceed amount of ten thousand, nine hundred dollars.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert, to execute a proposal with E. S. C. Midwest LLC to perform professional environmental engineering services for the phase-one environmental site assessment for the old city hall property not to exceed an amount of ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. Questions or comments?
Mike, did you have an opportunity to look this over?
I did not.
You did not?
I did not.
Roll call, please.
John Burchett, yes. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Well, I would have preferred if our attorney had reviewed it, so I'm not sure I'm going to pass.
Mark Sepidi.
I would like to have our legal counsel look it over first. I mean, I would vote yes, but not until that happens.
So are you voting no or abstaining?
I guess it's a no.
Thank you. Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And there's one last item, mayor, is that prior to the meeting, there was an issue brought to me about the timing of the Weber and Division signals. I just got a response back from the county and also the construction manager for Gas and Wash. A crew has been dispatched this evening to take a look at that, so hopefully by morning it should be resolved.
Thank you.
Okay, great, that's it.
Hey, Ron, I'm going to ask you one more time if you could just, since it's such a hindrance, the project on Route Thirty, can you just give a public update for the people watching?
Yes, as of, as of right now, last week, the existing water main has been completely lined. It's been televised and the services all have been reinstated. The water main is being currently tested as we speak. Starting later, probably this week, if the weather holds like it's supposed to, they're going to start removing the temporary system, starting at Six Corners and working to the east and start filling the holes and patching. As of right now, it looks like we're still looking at the end of November for everything to be completed. But you should actually start seeing people being hooked right back up to the existing water main and the patches starting to go away and the steel plates starting to be removed from U. S. Thirty.
Great, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Over on Center Street, that project there, it's pretty much done, isn't it?
Yes, the project there is a hundred percent complete except for a couple of punchless items that the contractor is working on. The punchless items that are still remaining is replacing some dead sod and re-rolling some of the sod because it's real bumpy. So that is to be completed this week, we were told by him, and then that project will be a hundred percent done.
Is there any reason the porta potty is still out there on Center?
He just hasn't finalized the project yet until workers are not on site anymore. He's got to keep it on. So as soon as the sod is replaced and he finishes the last punchless items, he'll remove that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Yep.
Community Development, our interim community development director, Ron Metzner. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, mayor and city council. While I don't have anything formal on the agenda tonight, building commissioner Seaman suggested I give the council a quick update that on Wednesday's monthly administrative adjudication hearing, there are twenty-five outstanding court enforcement cases that will be dealt with. Thanks.
Okay, any questions of Ron? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have two items this evening on the agenda. The first item is a police services contract with Caroline Lakes. It's for their annual trick-or-treat event on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, from two P. M. to four P. M. It's for one officer and one vehicle, and I'd be asking for approval of that contract.
So move as presented.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the Caroline Lakes Special Event Police Service request for this Sunday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item I have is for Siegel's Cottonwood Farm. It is for October twenty-first and twenty-second of this month, from one P. M. to six P. M. And this is a request for traffic control on Weber. And I always ask that they pay for two officers and two vehicles. We try our best to fill that. I just feel it's a, it's a safer environment to have two officers, two vehicles on a lever. So I'd be asking, requesting that approval of the contract.
So move. And second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to approve a special events police service agreement for Siegel's Cottonwood Farm for October twenty-first and October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Questions or comments?
Yes, chief, last year, I remember the same thing was done the week prior to Halloween, the weekend of Halloween, and they didn't have any police presence for that weekend right before Halloween. Was there any issues? Do you remember?
It, it's just as I, with all these contracts, is if we can fill them. And that's what I explained to the person who's requesting it. If we can fill it, we'll fill it. If not, it's going to be their responsibility. And we'll, we'll monitor and maintain a presence, at least in the areas best we can. But again, it's, it's just for those days, and that's what they're requesting. And just like any other contract, I always specify that if we can fill it, we'll fill it.
Well, I just want to make sure, because I know with Halloween being on, you know, the Tuesday, and you got the weekend right before that, they ain't requesting for any police, you know, service. That's why I want to make sure that there was no issue last year, because the same thing was last year, that they requested the weekend prior to.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I was not aware of an issue last year. It, it just slows down traffic quite a bit. That's, that's one issue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chief, are they going to pay for this, these two officers?
Yes, that's, that's the contract, yep.
Okay. The memo didn't specify it, but I didn't look further down. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I do not have any agenda items.
We need a roll call.
Whoop, roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, mayor's report. I do not have any agenda items, just a couple of announcements. The property tax rebate forms were included in the last water bill that you received a couple of weeks ago. Please fill that out. You have until December first to fill that out, meet all the requirements of the form to be able to get the twenty-five percent on the city portion of your property tax bill. Also, this Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten A. M. to one P. M., we're going to be having an open house of this building, this facility. We are going to have ribbon cutting with several speeches by our state officials and county officials. And there are going to be tours, and there will be refreshments for everyone, so please come and take a look at the building. And finally, this October thirty-first, Tuesday, October thirty-first, is going to be Halloween. The hours are from three to seven. So please take extra care of all the trick-or-treaters that we will be out in the neighborhoods. And if you want to participate, please turn your porch lights on, and if you do not wish to participate, leave them off. With that, I will try to answer any questions that anybody may have.
I just want to make one comment. The chief and I will be doing our annual Halloween show on W. J. O. L. tomorrow morning, so make sure you tune into that. It's always entertaining.
Okay, moving on to our city clerk's report. Christine Burchett-Hough.
Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight. The clerk's office just wishes all the little ghosts and goblins a happy New Day, Halloween.
Questions of the clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer's report. Treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have three items before you, two requiring action. The first one is we're requesting approval of the following collective bargaining agreements. One, City of Crest Hill Metropolitan Area Police, Chapter Fifteen, regarding patrol. And number two, City of Crest Hill and this Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter Six, for sergeants. Davis provided a summary for that contract. I believe the union, the union has ratified it and just needs a, needs our agreement.
So move as presented.
Second.
All right, we'll do, we'll do these individually. We'll do the first one here for approval, or a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Giselle, for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Metro, Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter Fifteen, for patrol. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And then I would ask for a motion for agenda item number two for the police sergeants.
So move.
So move.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by?
Second.
Alderman Person Oberlin, for a agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter Sixteen, for the sergeants. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for that, and Lisa and Dave have been working diligently on preparing to get the retro paid on in that regard, as well as updating the current, current wages. Next I have the only other action items. I seek approval of the list, the list of bills through October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of two million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
So moved as presented.
And second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Albert.
Yes.
Joe Coolwell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Burchett. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all. Lastly, just reporting our regular and overtime payroll from September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, through October eighth of two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Requires no action on your part. That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
I have a question to Lisa. I know this was before you came here about the tax rebate. When the resident, they come in with their tax rebate, is there a way we can change the way we do it, like about making a copy? I mean, we have residents that they come and they FOIA many pages, and they take time of staff to pull the FOIA printed, and I feel like it's okay to print one copy of the text. Is there a way we can change that, or do we, I don't know how this came, because I remember like before you, they said we cannot make copies.
I, again, that was before I got here, but I think it was the cost and the time of staff. I think they felt that if somebody would come in with their copies, it wasn't going to cost the city to make copies, but if council decides that you would like us to make copies for the residents.
I'm not saying let's advertise it, but I've, I've heard a couple, couple residents that they come here, especially all the way they come here, and they're like, oh, no, we can't accept it. So now we're sending them home because they have to go figure where they're going to make a copy. But yet, we have people that they're, they're doing a FOIA for many pages, and we're not charging them.
So we ask for a copy so they can have one. They can give us their copy. They can always then go back to the website on their own. So they don't necessarily need a copy unless they want it for their records. But again, it's councils, it's your choice if you want us to make copies, if you're okay with that. I think, again, this was done back in, I think, twenty sixteen. I think it's when it first started, and I think it was just due to the cost. I think that's why they said everybody would come in with their own copies. But again, it's up to council. If you guys are okay with us making the copy, then we would make the copy.
We're going to make a copy automatically or just upon request?
Well, usually they come in with their copy, so they're handing it to us. So if somebody then says they would like a copy, it's their, you know, it's their only copy that they have. If you guys are okay with that and you approve it, then we could do it based on that.
You're not looking at a big expense in terms of the cost of making a copy in the, in the paper.
It only takes a second to make a copy.
And I don't think you're looking at a big amount of time either, so with your permission, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'm not saying let's advertise it, you know, hey, come bring me a copy. If somebody wants a copy, I mean, I don't see why we turning, you know, a resident down for a copy. And I'm not blaming you. I understand this was before you and you just following the process, but I think we, we need to be a little bit more friendly when it comes to, we're putting them in this position like they have to have, give us this and give us, you know, let just, you know, make a copy. I don't think it's that big deal. Like I said earlier, we have people that they're making a lot of FOIA, and they're like many pages, many pages, and it's taking a lot of time to FOIA, correct? Like it takes a lot of time from staff to do that, so a copy is not going to take that much. And don't you have a copy machine right there? I saw the machine. So we have a copy hand, copy machine handy right in the front.
You're looking a nickel a piece for a copier and a, and a piece of paper, so.
Okay. Okay.
You know, if clerk's office is willing to do it, I would suggest that council consider that as a policy. If the customer comes in with a property tax bill, doesn't want to give that up, we'll retain a copy of it for them.
I would like that. Do we need to put that in motion, or just?
Just put it in practice. Yeah, we just make sure that's in practice.
We're willing to help out, too. If it gets too much, we'll, we're willing to jump over to our window.
It's a teamwork effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's great.
I still think the majority of the people will come in with them. It'll just be a select few that need help, so.
Yes, correct.
It's not like the whole city is going to want you to make a copy. I've made copies for people at Newmark, for crying out loud. They're coming in and they're asking me because they know I work there, and I just, I'd make them a copy. We don't ever talk to that either. I have done.
Appreciate that. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
All right, thanks, Glenn. Moving on, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Anybody?
No, but I forgot to make a statement to add. Earlier, when I came in here today, there was a lady standing by the door, and she was told about a ticket. She had a ticket in her hand, and they told her to drop it in the mailbox. Now I notice the police doesn't have one. Is there a way we can put something for a sec? Because she was so, I mean, it's so far and so tiny, nobody can see it. Is there a way we can add like a mailbox to keep the tickets away from water bill and, you know, that's like, I think, more private information with the tickets. It should not be.
You're talking like we used to have just the main one like this one.
Just something by the door so they can, she came, when she called, they told her she needed to come drop it off in the mailbox.
I have no problem.
And that happened tonight, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, committee liaison reports. Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Beginning with Ward Four tonight?